The Cuyahoga County Committee of the Whole meeting for Tuesday, August 5, 2025. Will please come to order. The time now is about 3:35 and I would ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Good evening. Good afternoon, everyone. As a reminder to all in attendance, this meeting is being recorded and livestreamed on the county's YouTube page. Calling the roll, Mr. Gallagher.
Here.
Mr. Schlepper. Ms. Conwell.
Present.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Ms. Turner.
Present.
Mr. Hauser.
Here.
Ms. Simon. Ms. Simon is absent at the moment. Mr. Kelly.
Here.
Mr. Sweeney.
Present.
Mr. Castleberry.
Here.
Council President Miller.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you very much. And the next item on the agenda is public comment. Has anybody signed in?
Lou?
May I make it possible to let the other person speak first?
We'll let the other person speak first.
Kimberly Novak.
Hi, everybody. My name is Kimberly Novak and I'm staying at Norma Her, a homeless shelter for women, otherwise known as the Hill. And I just wanted to share an anecdote with you guys that's an ongoing issue at this place. Basically, this past Saturday at around 8:19 PM, they normally serve snack between 8:00 and 8:30, and I wanted something sweet. So I went to the person who's in charge of the kitchen operations and I asked her, is snack time over or can I still get something? She told me that they have goldfish and soup and that's what they have. So I, you know, said, no, thank you, you know, I appreciate it. And I went on my way. I went to the bathroom and I thought about it and, you know, I was like, you know, I'm gonna get hungry later. I better get the goldfish. So I came back down and she said, you know, go over there in front of the kitchen and when I'm done in the front, I'll come see you. So I went to the kitchen and she handed me the two packets of goldfish and underneath that was a very nice blueberry muffin that was wrapped and everything. And she says, shh, put that in your purse right now and put it up. Don't let anyone see. I didn't give that to everybody. So these are donations being distributed only deferentially to people. And right after that, I was surprised because she began to usher me to her office and she says, you're gonna make a good staff report about me. And I would have done that anyway, you know, had she asked me, you know, just normally. But she ushered me into, it wasn't her office, it was a staff office that they often meet in. And it also contains donations and stuff and like brown paper opaque bags. So I entered the staff office and we couldn't, there's no staff report form. So she says, well, we could turn a grievance form into one, but there weren't grievance forms. So we used a work order form and I crossed it out and put staff report. And she sat there next to me and she told me, you know, begin it with my name. And she said, these are the phrases that I want you to include. Treats me with the utmost respect. Can I finish?
Just a few words of summary.
Okay. And she wanted me to say above and beyond as well. I did that. And during the time, she was throwing packets of Oreos for me from the donations that are for everybody and then asked me how often I washed my hair. And then she gave me a whole bottle of shampoo that is for donations that only goes into styrofoam cups for single use for people so that everybody could have some. She gave me a whole bottle of it, a full-size bottle, and it was really nice stuff.
Okay, thank you.
And that differential treatment.
Thank you very much. We have to conclude.
Lou?
Good afternoon, everybody. First thing I would like to-
Lou, state your name for the record, please.
This is Lou. First, I would like to address the issue about public comments itself. Obviously, two-story cannot even tell you a simple story we encounter at 227 Payne Avenue. Now, let's go back to the business. The incident you just heard, that's actually a very nice unethical behavior from the people working there. Mostly, it doesn't happen this way. That's why most of you have heard of a term from me, differential mistreatment. This time, you have a staff was eagerly to bribe a person staying there in order to have a report saying something good about this staff. That's because this staff made a big mistake. She knows something bad probably will happen to her or something. So she has been looking for somebody to write a report good about her. Mostly what happened would be people would be threatened, as I described to you about the elevator incidents back in May. Most people would be threatened to get kicked out of the shelter or they would just take your bed. Or they will say, no food, no this, no that. That's the normal unethical behavior happening every day. Probably, I can even say every hour. I would not be really exaggerating. This particular incident is very interesting. This also happens. And this is a type of the workers working in homeless shelters, maybe even county jail, group homes, drug treatment inpatient programs. If we do not really look at how we fund all these services, this will continue. Thank you.
That concludes the public comment portion for today's meeting.
Thank you very much. And next on our agenda, we have two items where we're gonna have informal presentations. And these are items that are urgent situations where if we decide it's appropriate, then they'll be on the agenda for passage on first reading suspension at tonight's council meeting. So since these are just preview presentations, it will not require a motion or any formal action at this meeting, just the council meeting. And so I am gonna ask, since the second item was not originally on the agenda and just came up in the last 24 hours, I would ask if there's any objection to hearing that presentation as well today. So hearing none, we'll proceed with both of them. And we don't officially have to read them in the record, but I think it's good for the public to hear the reading of the item. So I would ask the clerk to please read the first item.
Amending Resolution Number 2024-0368 dated November 12, 2024, which authorized an economic development loan in an amount not to exceed $2 million to Famous Distribution, Inc., doing business as Famous Supply, or its approved designee, for the construction and renovation of the Northeast Ohio Distribution Center located at 5700 Lee Road South in the city of Maple Heights to incorporate the revised term sheet approved by Cuyahoga County Community Improvement Corporation on July 28, 2025.
Please come forward.
Thank you, Council President Paul Hurtig with the Department of Development, here to address the committee, the whole, about the county's loan to Famous Supply. This body approved a $2 million economic development loan to Famous Supply back in November of 2024. I should say at the outset, we are not in any way changing the terms of the loan. The amount, the time period, rate of interest, all remains the same. The project, which was funded by the loan, is already underway, has been very successful. The construction needed to convert this formerly vacant building into both their distribution center and training center has been a complete success as it proceeds. And I've been informed that the company has already hired 36 of the 83 or so new employees that are anticipated to be hired at that facility. The reason we've come back first to our loan review board and then back to council is as we got very close to being ready to close the loan, we had a situation with one of the other lenders in the project that was somewhat different from what we had understood. It was so different, we thought it was what we call a material change, and we thought it was important to bring the loan back for discussion and reapproval. So briefly stated, Famous Supply is part of a family of companies called Famous Enterprises. Famous Supply is a company in its own right. Famous Supply is the company we're lending the money to. Famous Supply is the company building the project out in Maple Heights, and that is all proceeding as planned. Its loan is guaranteed by its parent company, Famous Enterprises. As we moved along towards closing the loan, we understood that Famous Enterprises has a large line of credit arrangement with a group of banks led by PNC. And it has that because Famous Enterprise is growing. It is taking on new lines of business, new projects. It's being very successful. Because of this, the group of lenders led by PNC asked us to agree that they could make additional advances on their line of credit, additional borrowing to the parent company, Famous Enterprises. This was beyond what we had understood and beyond what we had presented to our loan review committee and even to council back in November. A material difference. We were concerned about this. Our attorneys engaged in some discussions, negotiations with attorneys for PNC to make sure we fully understood what they were asking us to agree to. We actually negotiated some changes in what they wanted. Most important change we negotiated was we are still able to call upon our loan guarantee. PNC asked us to give that up. We said, no, we need that. So we are still able to call upon our loan guarantee. As we further researched this, our staff re-underwrote the loan. They re-analyzed the information for the company we are lending to, which is Famous Supply, as well as the guarantor, the big company, Famous Enterprises. And we had a full discussion about what was going on with this line of credit. What we learned is that it's not just unlimited. The parent company, Famous Enterprises, can't just go to PNC and say, give me more money. There are guardrails, there are rules, there's a review that PNC does every quarter to make sure that the borrowing on its line of credit is within some strict guidelines. What we were able to negotiate for our protection, the county's protection, is that those same guidelines would apply to the guarantee of our loan. So this is unprecedented, but we got the agreement on this. We will receive every quarter the same entire package of financial information on the parent company that PNC gets. It's going to be lengthy. Our staff will review it. We will therefore have the ability to ensure and satisfy ourselves that the parent company is staying within its borrowing guidelines, will not take on excessive debt, will not get into trouble. So therefore, its guarantee of our loan will still be strong and valid. So after all this review and discussion, we then went and consulted the chair of our loan review committee. His name is Anthony Tavrell. He serves as a volunteer. We don't pay him anything. His full-time job is he's a commercial banker at Key Bank. He has chaired our loan review committee for a number of years now. And with Anthony Tavrell's assistance and advice, he felt it was appropriate to bring this up to the full loan committee. So Anthony Tavrell, the president, called a meeting. It was well attended. It was attended by bankers from Huntington Bank, by the owner of insurance company, Mr. Perry, as well as a number of our county representatives, including our fiscal officer, Michael Chambers. There was a full discussion held of this new arrangement. Our loan review committee then went into executive session, had a full discussion, and came out and voted unanimously to recommend reapproval of the loan. So we're coming back to council, asking that council again approve the loan, understanding it has been fully reviewed by our loan review committee and has their recommendation. So in a nutshell, what we're asking council to prove is this. The same loan, the same terms, no change in the repayment schedule, no change in the security, which is still the equipment. The only change is we are allowing the parent company, the guarantor, to have some additional borrowing on its big line of credit. We believe that the guardrails we've put in place are enough that Cuyahoga County is still well protected on its $2 million loan to Famous Supply. So I'm happy to answer any questions from members of the committee. We also have staff, our legal counsel, and the company here as well.
So the legislation before us tonight would reapprove the loan, accepting a revision to the underwriting standards. Any questions by my colleagues?
Pass through the chair to Paul. When is this loan up? When will it be repaid, the $2 million loan?
May I ask staff to, Matthew, can you give us the details on terms of the loan, please, the repayment period?
Yeah.
Come up and state your name.
Matthew Carey, Department of Development. So the loan will have a one-year interest-only period followed by 10 years fully amortizing term.
Thank you.
Council President?
Yes.
I want the record to reflect that Councilmember Simon is in attendance.
Okay. And also, I will recognize Councilmember Simon.
Thank you. Director, just a question about the parent company's ability to draw down a line of credit as the guarantor. And you said that you're gonna be reviewing the operation of the parent company.
Yes.
How often, quarterly?
Quarterly. We will receive quarterly the same financial information they give to PNC.
What happens if something looks amiss or that there's some red flags coming out of the parent company's creditworthiness?
Councilwoman, if our loan servicing staff in the review spotted something that was a concern, we would first have discussions both with Famous Supply itself and with PNC to understand PNC's view of this as the senior lender. If we were not able to assure ourselves that Famous Enterprises was still going to be able to honor its guarantee, we would then invoke our rights under the loan agreement with Famous Supply and the guarantee agreement with Famous Enterprises. This could ultimately result in our calling upon Famous Enterprise to honor its guarantee. That would be the final tool we would have in our toolbox. We would not anticipate it would get to that point primarily because PNC, which has $125 million credit relationship with Famous Enterprises, does pay a lot of attention to their operations. PNC actually receives monthly reports. And part of the assurance we have here is that we've had this discussion with PNC to also understand the degree of scrutiny we're both going to be giving the company.
Do we have the ability to call in the loan?
Councilwoman, we would have to go through a series of steps before we got to that point, but ultimately, our loan agreement does give us the right, under some circumstance, to not only declare the loan payable, also to invoke the guarantee.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Councilman Jones?
Give us a sense of circumstances where you might potentially call the loan.
So again, to the councilman, this would be a last resort. And while it is theoretically possible, we would first engage in informal discussions. We would then give four-
We would then give formal notice of non-compliance. And we would then engage in some more formal discussions and negotiations. Ultimately, however, it would be our decision, advised by our legal counsel, if we had reached the point where we're not able to satisfy ourselves about the security. And so after all that, with our legal counsel's advice, we would then issue that declaration that the loan is now due.
Is the loan collateralized at all?
Yes, councilman. It's collateralized by second position on equipment, the equipment which is in the distribution center and the training center.
Anything else? Okay. Oh, hold on. Councilman Hauser?
To the chair, Paul. Who's doing the work for the construction and renovation of this project?
Councilman, I have actually the CFO of this company here. Kevin, if you could... I'm sorry?
Director Finance.
Director Finance. And he could perhaps give a very quick...
The general contractor, any other details?
Kevin Carney. The general contractor on the job is Maruus Construction.
Is any other, I guess... I guess my concern is, for this project, have you guys had, like, any district residents, any minority residents? Like, what goes into, for my knowledge, if you don't mind, who gets to do the work, the renovation and construction of this project?
So...
Mr. Carney, if you could speak directly into the microphone, please?
Yes. So we've engaged with Maruus, and they have gone through and either subcontracted out the work to whoever they've deemed reasonable from both an expertise and perspective to get the work done.
Sounds good. Can you, can we get the names? So we're aware as a council of who is doing this work, this $2 million project? If we can get maybe a list? I know you said Maruus, but like, any other contractors on the project?
Hi, my name's Melissa Virchell. I'm with MCM Company. We're a consultant to Famous Supply for this particular project. So it's actually a $60 million project. And it's a combination of significant renovations to the existing building, technology being added to the existing building in the form of an equipment system that actually picks. And then there's a training center as well that they're adding. So it's a significantly large project with some specific requirements on installation, especially the picking system that they're installing. Additionally, the majority of the Cuyahoga County or city of Maple Heights incentive was for us to hire from both Cuyahoga County and Maple Heights. And I think Kevin can tell us, because he and I were talking about this the other day, that all 36 of the employees that they've already hired, who are currently working in the facility, are all from Cuyahoga County or from the Maple Heights area.
67%.
Oh, sorry, 67% are from Cuyahoga County. And then they're still in the process right now of reviewing applications for the balance that they're hoping to have filled by the end of the year. So...
That is excellent information. That's good information for us to know. And whenever you guys get a chance, if you could just send over the list so we're aware as well, that'd be great.
You're looking for the subcontractor list?
Entire, the 67, whatever list. I'm sure you guys have a list of people doing work on a project.
We do.
Send it over, it'd be great. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. That'll be up for council action tonight at the meeting. Would you please read the second item?
Authorizing the county executive to accept dedication of land for Grandview Drive in the sanctuary of Olmsted and the preserve of Olmsted subdivision, located in Olmsted Township, as a public street along with established setback lines, rights of ways, and easements.
Good afternoon. My name is Megan Chaney, Senior Planner with the County Planning Commission. I am joined here with Tony Valori of Valori Homes. I can provide a little bit of background and then hand it over to Tony for any questions. The final plat for Phase 2A of the sanctuary and preserve was approved with conditions by the County Planning Commission on June 12, 2025. As such, all improvements, including utilities and roadway, have been constructed to the satisfaction of Olmsted Township and Cuyahoga County. All conditions of approval have been met, and the final plat has been circulated for appropriate signatures. The final step before the final plat is able to be recorded includes obtaining Cuyahoga County Council approval and acceptance of lands for the new public roadway, including associated rights of way, as well as easements for all associated public utilities. That total of dedicated lands is 1.61 acres. The developer, Tony Valori, has requested the council approve the acceptance of dedicated lands at first reading, since the developer is under contract with a home builder, and they are trying to take advantage of the construction and selling season. Neither the planning commission nor Public Works have any issue with the acceptance of dedicated lands moving forward at this first reading, so long as it is recognized that this is an exception due to the upcoming recess.
Thank you. Hi, my name's Tony Valori. Valori Builders. We've been putting lots in subdivisions in for, it's hard to believe, now almost 45 years. And we happen to run into all kinds of bottlenecks with this one from cross-rising pandemic and, you name it, over the last four years. And with the August recess in front of us, and that would have pushed us back to the third week, I believe, of September, I asked if we could ask for acceptance of it prior to that, an emergency legislation or approval. That's the only reason we're here, is because we lose that six weeks going into September. So my prayer is that you could recognize that timing's important, especially in Cleveland, Ohio, and weather and things that go wrong going forward. And that's a full intent and reason why. We'd like to get going after five and a half years. Thank you.
Are there any questions? Okay. Thank you very much. It'll be up for consideration at tonight's council meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And is Sarah here? I'd like to invite our distinguished director, Sarah Parks Jackson, to give us a few parting words.
Good afternoon. Sarah Parks Jackson, Director of the Department of Housing and Community Development, for another 30 minutes. Council President Miller and council members, when you return from recess, I will be officially retired after 29 years of service with Cuyahoga County. I wanted to take this opportunity to thank each and every one of you and all the previous council members I've had the pleasure of working with. Your wise counsel and support. Over the years, you've challenged me and made me a stronger leader and person. I would also like to thank your phenomenal staff. Not just because on occasion they feed me, because they do, but because no matter what, they have allowed me to share ideas, provided feedback and guidance, and allowed me to share information with them to just understand the politics and what we do for the community and how it would help. Please know it has been my extreme honor and privilege to work with you all in service to our residents. And I was in a meeting last Friday, and the great Margot Copeland said, "There is no shut-off valve after retirement." So I guarantee you, the valve is on, and I'll be around. And I just wanted to say thank you very much.
Thank you so much. You have truly served the public and the county with distinction, and we're all grateful for the work that you've done for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
All meetings of the Cuyahoga County Council are open to the public under the open meetings laws. Under that law, council may go into executive session during a meeting for specifically authorized purposes. During the executive session, council confers outside the hearing of the public. Council may not make any decisions about any matters in executive session. All decisions are made in public. This afternoon, the council will go into executive session for the purpose of discussing a collective bargaining matter and pending or imminent court action. During this time, our live stream will be down, and we ask all those not specifically needed for the executive session to remain in council chambers. Council members will convene in the adjacent Committee Room A and re-enter the meeting once the executive session has ended. Is there a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing a collective bargaining matter and pending or imminent litigation?
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Requires a roll call. I'd ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Mr. Gallagher? Mr. Schlepper?
Yes.
Ms. Conwell? Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Hauser? Ms. Simon? Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Sweeney? Mr. Sweeney's absent. Mr. Castleberry?
Yes.
Council President Miller?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you very much.
The committee of the hall will please come back to order and the executive session has been completed. I would ask if anyone has any miscellaneous business. Hearing none, the committee of the hall is adjourned and we will begin the regular council meeting at five minutes past the hour. Thank you.